Bienvenidos a esta sesión especial de la investigación de COVID-19 y el cáncer. Mi nombre es Tony Ribas. Hemos tenido una sesión muy exitosa sobre COVID-19 y el cáncer en Virtual Meeting 1, enfocada en las presentaciones clínicas sobre los efectos de la pandemia de COVID-19 sobre pacientes con cáncer. Durante la sesión Virtual Meeting 2, el lunes, tuvimos una sesión muy informativa, patrocinada por la FDA, sobre la guía para la conducta de ensayos clínicos y consideraciones para evidencia real del mundo. Ayer tuvimos una sesión maravillosa organizada por el Consejo de Investigación de la minorías de la ACR sobre desigualdades en la salud en la pandemia de COVID-19. Para esta tercera sesión dedicada a COVID-19 en el virtual Meeting 2, pensamos enfocarnos en la investigación realizada por investigadores que estaban trabajando en otros proyectos, en particular, investigadores de cáncer que habían dejado todo lo que estaban haciendo para estudiar este virus. Estos son dos estrellas de la investigación que nos están ayudando a enfocarnos en COVID-19. Empezaremos con una presentación especial para el Dr. Francis Collins. Como muchos de ustedes saben, el Dr. Collins es el director de los Instituto Nacional de Salud. En este papel, oversee el trabajo del mayor apoyador de la investigación biomédica mundial, expandiendo el espectro desde la investigación básica hasta la clínica. El Dr. Collins es un médico y ético notado por sus descubrimientos de genes de enfermedad y su liderazgo en el proyecto genoma humano internacional. Entre muchos honores, es miembro de la Academia Nacional de Medicina, la Academia Nacional de Ciencias, y fue premiado por el método presidencial de la libertad y el método nacional de la ciencia. Empecemos con la presentación del Dr. Collins.
Hola colegas, soy Francis Collins, el director de los Instituto Nacional de Salud. Veniendo a ustedes virtualmente de mi oficina en Chevy Chase, Maryland, donde he pasado casi todas las 12 semanas pasadas, como muchos de ustedes también, tratando de mantenerse seguros de COVID-19, pero todavía tratando de seguir adelante el trabajo. Y sé que ustedes han estado haciendo eso también. Francamente, no estoy seguro de que recuerde trabajar más horas que he hecho en esas 12 semanas, solo debido a la intensidad de tratar de hacer todo lo que podemos en NIH para promover más diagnósticos, mejor terapia y nuevos vacines para COVID-19 en un momento de una pandemia global tan significativa. Así que es un honor poder hablar con ustedes, aunque desearía estar allí con ustedes en persona y poder tener todo tipo de conversaciones interiores interesantes. Pero ese no es el brazo que hemos tenido en este momento. Entonces, déjenme decirles un poco sobre lo que NIH ha estado haciendo en este espacio y al final, tal vez algunas reflexiones sobre su relación con el cáncer. Así que en este punto, voy a compartir mi pantalla. Y con suerte ahora pueden ver los visuales que quería compartirles sobre lo que tengo que decir, empezando con el hecho de que no tengo disculpa financiera o conflictos de interés como serviente de gobierno. Esas son cosas que no tengo que preocuparme porque son absolutamente prohibidas. Topos de los que quiero hablar son estos cinco. Primero de todo, ¿qué está haciendo NIH? Como COVID-19 ha ido global y eso en realidad se desbordará en el segundo tema y el tercer tema. Y explicaré esos acrónimos a usted cuando llegue. Y luego quiero decir algo sobre lo que el Instituto del Cáncer ha estado haciendo para llevar el esfuerzo en el análisis serológico de COVID-19. Y finalmente, este estudio ENCAPS sobre pacientes de cáncer que también han tenido sus vidas afectadas por COVID, lo cual está solo comenzando. Bueno, recuerden cuando esto estaba sucediendo en principios de enero. Estos primeros indicaciones de algún tipo de nuevo virus humano en China inicialmente afirmaba que iba a salir del mercado de alimentos de mar, aunque ahora pensamos que no era tan simple. Y el 9 de enero, la identificación del estrés de ese coronavirus. Y el 10 de enero, la secuencia real del genoma viral fue presentado. El día después de eso, nuestros propios científicos en el Centro de Investigación de Vacunas en NIH comenzaron a diseñar una vacuna, reconociendo que esto podría muy bien convertirse en una amenaza global. Aunque en ese momento creo que nadie realmente sabía que esto era probable que sucediera. Y usando esta estrategia de hacer una vacuna basada en RNA, desarrollaron el enfoque apropiado, se unieron con una biotecnología llamada Moderna y comenzaron el proceso de ponerlo en marcha justo en caso de que fuera necesario. Y adivinen qué, muy bien fue necesario. Así que ese fue el enero, solo hace seis meses, un poco menos que eso. Es difícil creer que el tiempo ha sido tan corto cuando ven cómo muchas cosas han sucedido en este espacio. Más tarde en ese mes, como se volvió más claro que esto era en realidad una amenaza global, la administración inició la Coronavirus Task Force. Y a nuestra gran fortuna, Tony Fauci, el director del Instituto Nacional de Allergia y Enfermedad, fue designado a esa Task Force y se ha convertido en un portavoz líder de los hechos científicos, de los hechos médicos, y alguien que siempre dice exactamente como es lo que sabemos y lo que no sabemos. Es mi gran fortuna tener a Tony como colega en este esfuerzo tratando de hacer todo lo que podemos científicamente sobre COVID-19, pero también para comunicarle al público lo que creemos que podrían necesitar saber sobre ello también. También he unido a esa Task Force en las tres últimas semanas. Se reúne un par de veces al mes, dirigido por el vicepresidente. Y es una oportunidad para muchos temas importantes para ser discutidos. El Dr. Deborah Birx, Ambassador Birx, es el otro científico médico que oversee mucho del trabajo de la Task Force. Y ciertamente entre ella y Tony, hay mucho pensamiento profundo en cómo dirigir este esfuerzo en particular hacia adelante. Y sí, COVID-19 fue global. Dios, en febrero, 43,000 casos, eso fue todo. Cuán le hemos llegado. A mediados de junio, pueden ver desde el sitio web de Hopkins, que mencioné, muchos de ustedes también han estado mirando, casos confirmados totales de más de 8 millones, muertes globales de 444,000, desgraciadamente en los Estados Unidos. Un gran grupo de esos, de hecho, un poco más de 120,000 personas han perdido sus vidas a esta infección viral. Y recientemente, cuando miramos un sitio web, una analisis que se hizo en NCI, también parece haber estado subrayando casos de COVID-19 porque hay un aumento de la mortalidad durante este mismo periodo de tiempo que no parece ser de otra forma responsable. No ha sido diagnosticado como COVID-19, pero probablemente un número significativo de esos casos fueron en realidad simplemente perdidos en términos de que el viral sea la causa. Hemos continuado trabajando duro en el Centro de Investigación de Vacunas y también tratando de compartir esa información con todos los gente en la administración que están interesados en averiguar más sobre ello. El presidente llegó a visitar el Centro de Investigación de Vacunas el 3 de marzo. Pueden ver a través de esta larga mesa, individuos que estaban allí, incluyendo al secretario de Salud y Servicios Humanos, pasando de la izquierda a la derecha, Larry Tobe Kayback, que es el principal director adjunto, John Mascola, que es el director del Centro de Investigación de Vacunas, Tony, el presidente, secretario adjunto y yo mismo. En la derecha superior, dos de los científicos que realmente han impulsado este esfuerzo en el VRC, que es Casimicka Corbett y Barney Graham, dos de ellos muy distintos científicos y haciendo cosas increíbles suceder en cortos periodos de tiempo. En la parte inferior derecha, visita al laboratorio, que me parece que Tony está llevándonos y demás, pero creo que en realidad está explicando un poco de ciencia sobre cómo funcionan las vacunas y cómo se generan los anticuerpos. Así que sí, parte de nuestro trabajo es hacer la ciencia y parte de ello es explicarlo. Quiero decirles sobre Active. Este es un acrónimo, se traduce en Accelerating COVID-19 Therapeutic Interventions and Vaccines. Así que, ¿qué es esto? Fue bastante claro para mí y muchos otros en marzo, cuando este virus comenzó a difundirse aún más ampliamente, que había un interés intenso por parte de ambos sectores público y privado en tratar de inventar estrategias para desarrollar mejores tratamientos y para desarrollar vacunas. Pero la función de coordinación estaba bastante desplegada, o tal vez no estaba en absoluto. Todo el mundo concordó que necesitábamos priorizar, pero exactamente cómo iba a suceder eso. Así que reuniendo líderes de FDA, CDC, del Departamento de Defensa, la Administración de los Veterans y, por supuesto, múltiples institutos en NIH, así como BARTA, invitamos también líderes de la industria, los jefes de R&amp;D de casi una docena de empresas farmacéuticas a reunirse y hablar sobre qué necesitamos hacer juntos si realmente vamos a tener éxito en acelerar el éxito aquí en términos de terapias y vacunas. Porque fue un poco de un disparo en ese momento. El grupo se unió, decidieron muy rápidamente que necesitábamos hacer un número de cosas para facilitar tanto la investigación pre-clínica como clínica en este espacio y lanzó este esfuerzo el 17 de abril. Un esfuerzo que ha sido bastante aportador para todos nosotros involucrados, pero con buena razón. Aquí pueden ver la estructura de esto, es una cooperación público-private. Tiene algunas similitudes con otras cooperaciones público-private que NIH ha estado involucrado, como la AMP, Accelerando Partnerships for Diabetes and Alzheimer's Disease, pero también PACT, la que se enfoca en la inmunoterapia del cáncer. Donde lo que tratamos de hacer es traer los mejores y mejores científicos de todos los sectores al mismo table, diseñar lo que debe hacerse y luego avanzar, asegurándonos de cumplir con los maelones. Esta activa cooperación público-private está co-dirigida por mí mismo y Paul Stoffels de J&amp;J. Pueden ver a los miembros del comité ejecutivo, un grupo diverso de gente con diferentes perspectivas. Y luego abajo pueden ver que hay cuatro grupos de trabajo que tienen roles específicos para tratar de acelerar el progreso contra COVID-19. Y les daré la siguiente slide, les mostrará algo sobre lo que han logrado. El grupo pre-clínico ha sido cargado con inventar un inventario de master de qué tipo de exámenes y qué tipo de pantallas de alto rendimiento se están probando para encontrar compuestos que podrían ser repurificados como antivirales contra COVID-19, mirando modelos animales, creando bases públicas y así sucesivamente. El grupo clínico de terapias fue cargado con priorizar más de 400 posibles terapias que se habían propuesto para averiguar cuáles de ellos eran más apropiados para entrar rápidamente en ensayos clínicos de placebo controlado bien diseñado y randomizado. Y pasando por ese proceso más rápido, llegaron con un conjunto de moduladores inmunológicos que pensaban que eran de alta prioridad y otro conjunto de anticoagulantes que pensaban que eran de alta prioridad, dada la creciente evidencia de que el sangre acumulando es un problema principal que lleva a la muerte y personas que tienen la forma muy avanzada de enfermedad de pulmón de COVID-19. Y esos ensayos están a punto de llegar a cabo. El tercer grupo, capacidad clínica, fue cargado con mirar todos los redes de ensayos clínicos en todo el país y en todo el mundo. Muchos de ellos no diseñados para enfermedad infecciosa, tal vez para otras cosas, pero dado este clima de una pandemia global, podría ser reunido para hacer posible los tipos de ensayos clínicos a la velocidad y el rendimiento que nosotros de otra manera no estaríamos capaces de lograr. Y eso ha sido una experiencia bastante sorprendente ver cómo podemos reunir toda esa capacidad en un momento como este. Y luego el cuarto grupo sobre vacunas, desarrollar un protocolo de vacunas armonizado, que es la forma en la que las vacunas van a ser probadas, acordándose en puntos comunes, exámenes de laboratorio comunes, mirando las respuestas inmunarias para ver qué correlaciona con la protección contra la infección, todo eso sucediendo ahora de una manera notable. Estos cuatro grupos de trabajo, cada uno de los cuales está co-dirigido por una persona de la industria y una persona de NIH, ahora involucran casi 100 personas y han estado trabajando literalmente 24/7 desde el 17 de abril. Nunca he visto nada tan ambicioso y energético como esto. Estos grupos se reúnen a veces diariamente con múltiples temas de acción que establecen para lograr y nadie se preocupa por quién obtiene el crédito. Solo tenemos que hacer el trabajo. Eso ha contribuido, creo, sustancialmente al progreso que hemos hecho ahora donde uno no puede imaginar en el futuro no demasiado lejano, empezar a ver realmente resultados de los esfuerzos terapéuticos y de las vacunas. Y, por supuesto, eso es lo que todo el mundo está buscando. El esfuerzo terapéutico ahora llevando rápidamente a ensayos de anticuerpos monoclonales. Los ensayos de vacunas, con el primero siendo el que fue diseñado en nuestro Centro de Investigación de Vacunas, comenzaremos a inscribir voluntarios de pacientes en julio, lo que no está lejos. Además de eso, otra estructura organizacional llegó a ser llamada Warp Speed o Operation Warp Speed, y pueden haber escuchado sobre eso y preguntado cómo todo eso se une con esto. Esto se anunció en el Rose Garden el 15 de mayo. Mancev Slawi, que ven en el podium, ex jefe de investigación y desarrollo en GSK, fue solicitado para venir y liderar este esfuerzo. Y básicamente, este es un esfuerzo dentro del gobierno, no involucrando partidos fuera del gobierno, pero dentro del gobierno, para asegurarse de que todos los jugadores están trabajando juntos de una manera intensamente efectiva y que los recursos que están disponibles, que suman un número sustancial de billones que el Congreso proporciona, se usan de la manera óptima para avanzar el esfuerzo. Y eso incluye, para las vacunas, no solo asegurarse de que podemos realizar varios ensayos clínicos de múltiples plataformas de vacunas a la vez, pero que la manufactura en riesgo también está invertida. Donde las dosis, cientos de millones de dosis se están pensando para las vacunas incluso antes de que se hayan mostrado seguras y efectivas, para que no haya un largo rango al final del proceso cuando algo parece haber funcionado, pero no tienes suficientes dosis listas para ofrecer a la gente. Así que esta es una estructura muy complicada, pero en realidad funciona bastante bien. Pueden pensar que Active es el tipo de arma del diseño de esto. Operation Warp Speed es el banco que asegura que el diseño sucede y la cooperación con la industria y con todas estas otras partes del gobierno es en realidad extremadamente estrecha y funciona realmente bien. Ahora déjenme decirles sobre diagnósticos. Porque también es una área, por supuesto, de interés intenso y gran necesidad. En los Estados Unidos hemos visto subestancias en la disponibilidad de diagnósticos para COVID-19. Hablaré de serología en un minuto, pero creo que la área donde la gente necesita más urgentemente ver la expansión de los diagnósticos es la detección del virus. La mayoría de esos test ahora involucran el uso de RT-PCR en tiempo real. La mayoría de esos se hacen en laboratorios grandes donde tienes que obtener el sample y luego de alguna manera enviarlo al laboratorio para ser probado. Y eso no es algo que hasta ahora ha sido tan fácilmente hecho por la unidad de cuidado. Creemos que había una oportunidad aquí durante un tiempo y el Congreso se unió muy fuertemente. Y justo el 25 de abril, que es menos de dos meses atrás, el Congreso decidió que realmente debíamos tener un gran empuje aquí. Y que fue genial que estábamos actualizando la capacidad de hacer pruebas en laboratorios centrales ahora, hasta el punto de que hay más de 20 millones que se han hecho. Pero realmente sería bueno si tuviéramos otros tipos de capacidad diagnóstica que fuera de la unidad de cuidado. Que fuera both disponible y accesible, tal vez en el escritorio, en el hogar de la enfermería, antes de que alguien venga a trabajar y te diera una respuesta rápidamente. Desafortunadamente, muchos de los laboratorios centralizados, solo debido a la logística, puede tomar un día o dos antes de que la respuesta vuelva. Y mientras tanto, alguien infectado puede ya haber difundido el virus más allá a otras personas. Así que quieres un cambio rápido. Así que lo que propusimos después de que el Congreso viniera y dijera que estaban dispuestos a sumar algunos fondos adicionales, fue algo llamado RAD-X, la Iniciativa de Acceleración de Diagnósticos, todo tiene que tener un acrónimo. Y esto suena tan loco, así que creo que decidimos que nos gustaba este. Y una gran parte de esto es lo que ven aquí, que es un funo de innovación. Y algunos han llamado esto un tanque de arco, y creo que esa es una descripción bastante buena. Así que, ¿qué estamos haciendo aquí? Estamos conscientes de que hay mucha creatividad ahí fuera en las personas que hacen el desarrollo de pruebas diagnósticas, ingenieros y otros tipos de gurús de tecnología. Pero la mayoría de ellos estaban en escala pequeña. Supongamos que abrimos la puerta para cualquier persona que tenga una plataforma tal que estén listos para presentarse a una evaluación, y si parece incluso un poco prometedor, se pone en el tanque de arco con toda una variedad de expertos en asesorías, expertos en negociación, expertos en comercialización, expertos en tecnología, ingenieros, personas de la cadena de suministro, para decir, ¿podría esto en realidad, si dieran recursos adecuados, escalar rápidamente y hacer una gran diferencia en nuestra capacidad de hacer pruebas tan pronto como el final del verano o el otoño de este año? Y recuerden, esto comenzó en abril, ese es un horario que es verdaderamente emocionante. Dentro de cinco días después de que obtuvimos el dinero del Congreso, esto se estableció. Bruce Stromberg, que dirige el Instituto Nacional de Bioimagería y Bioingeniería, ha llevado este esfuerzo, aprovechando un red que ya estaba ahí para la tecnología de la unidad de cuidado. Y ha sido fenomenal ver lo que ha sucedido aquí. Alrededor de 500 aplicaciones ya han llegado. Alrededor de algo más del 10% de esos ahora han ido a este tanque de fase cero para ver cómo se ven. Y algunos de esos ya han graduado de eso en la fase uno y la fase dos, donde la escala real no está lejos para uno o dos de estos. Así que aunque este es un horario emocionante, en realidad podría ser alcanzable que tendríamos por el otoño estos tipos de nuevas tecnologías que son útiles, de la unidad de cuidado y son affordables y dan una respuesta en una gran prisa. Porque hay algunas tecnologías muy buenas en algunas de estas plataformas, incluyendo algunas que usan Crisper-Cass y una variedad de otras cosas como lampas, amplificación, que no requieren un ciclo térmico. Así que esto será divertido, creo, para que todo el mundo vea. Claramente, es un sueño de los ingenieros tener este tipo de esfuerzo innovador todo juntado para ver qué sale de él. Pero eso es solo parte de RAD-X, eso fue la tecnología RAD-X de la que os dije. También nos dimos cuenta de que hay cosas sobre diagnósticos que necesitan atención que no han sido bien abordadas. Una muy importante es esta llamada RAD-X UP, para poblaciones desapoyadas. No puedes mirar alrededor ahora y no estar corazón enterrado cuando ves la forma en la que COVID-19 ha impactado particularmente, esas mismas poblaciones que ya han estado sufriendo desigualdades en la salud. Individuos que son ancianos pero con enfermedades crónicas y especialmente aquellos en comunidades de status socioeconómico bajo, afroestadounidenses, hispanos, todos esos individuos pagando un precio mucho más alto por la parte de la enfermedad grave de esta enfermedad que otros. Y tenemos que averiguar qué hacer con eso. Una de las razones es la falta de acceso a las pruebas en muchas de esas comunidades. Y lo que la RAD-X UP aspira a hacer es establecer proyectos de demostración para proporcionar ese tipo de capacidad de prueba mucho más amplia y efectiva. Y así estamos ahora en el proceso, hemos puesto out de FOAs para ver quién está ahí que quiere unirse a este esfuerzo y están contando con esto para ser una iniciativa importante para abordar las desigualdades en la salud como se relacionan con COVID-19 y otras cosas también. Porque las desigualdades en la salud son a menudo basadas en enfermedades crónicas que impactan a esas mismas poblaciones bastante fuerte. RAD-X RAD es radical, básicamente es para mirar las tecnologías que no están muy listas para el tanque de arco. Son incluso más salvajes y locos, pero con algún investir, podrían potencialmente resultar bastante interesantes. Tal vez no en el mismo horizonte del final del verano o el otoño, pero dentro de un año ahora. Y ciertamente esperamos, vamos a continuar necesitando este tipo de capacidad diagnóstica por mucho tiempo. Y luego hay RAD-X ATP, ese es el lado opuesto a esto. Estas son tecnologías que ya han pasado por la forma del tanque de arco, pero no han sido completamente extendidas, escaladas y implementadas. Y hay unos de esos, con un gran empuje y un poco de dinero que el Congreso nos ha dado, podríamos ser capaces de salir allí de una manera que duplicaría o triplicaría nuestras capacidades para ofrecer pruebas. Y especialmente, por supuesto, estamos pensando en esto en el otoño, con las universidades y los colegios tratando de volver en sesión y no queriendo tener una segunda onda como resultado de todas esas cosas. Así que esos son los componentes de RAD-X. Os he dicho sobre Active, os he dicho sobre RAD-X, pueden ver que tenemos terapias, tenemos vacunas, tenemos diagnósticos. Pero también tenemos mucho interés concreto en esto. Aquí hay una audiencia que se celebró el 7 de mayo. Si nunca han ido a una audiencia antes, pueden preguntar qué es la configuración cuando todos estamos tratando de mantener distancia. Bueno, pueden ver en el medio cómo se ve. Normalmente, estaríamos todos estrechitos y de hombros. El presidente del Comité de ayuda, Lamar Alexander, y el miembro de la lista, Patty Murray, supervisó una audiencia donde fui el testigo principal, siendo preguntado qué estábamos haciendo con los diagnósticos en el tanque de arco, junto con mi colega Gary Disbro, que dirige BARTA. Y fue en realidad una audiencia muy exitosa, pero el Congreso espera, ya que han proporcionado billones de dólares para COVID-19 y que lo estamos usando con cuidado, así que esa es otra gran parte de cómo estoy pasando mi tiempo. Quiero ir al final aquí a dos otros temas que son directamente relevantes para el Instituto del Cáncer, ya que estoy hablando con el ACR después de todo. Y quiero dar un saludo grande a Ned Sharpless y a la forma en la que ha llevado a NCI a un lugar muy importante para lidiar con la pregunta sobre pruebas de anticuerpos para COVID-19 o serología. Y la gente dice, bueno, espérenme un momento, ¿qué está haciendo el Instituto del Cáncer en este espacio? Bueno, porque NCI tiene este laboratorio de serología en Frederick National Lab, que fue desarrollado para la investigación de la HPPV, estaban muy bien preparados para poder hacer validación de varios pruebas de serología comercial que estaban comenzando a impactar el mercado y donde la FDA realmente necesitaba ayuda en la evaluación de la performance de estos. Y así se convirtieron en NCI y Ned y sus colegas se unieron a esto. Y en un período bastante rápido de tiempo, pudimos comenzar a evaluar estos diversos kits que la FDA necesitaba saber si debían dar aprobación o no. No voy a pasar por el diagrama en ningún detalle grande debido al tiempo, pero básicamente estaban mirando tanto exámenes Eliza como dispositivos de flujo lateral. Tenían un panel de validación, así que tenían básicamente el estándar oro de qué positivo y qué negativo debería ser y los pasaron a la validación apropiada y luego dieron la información a la FDA. Y la FDA luego pasó adelante y publicó esto. Y creo que es justo decir que la mayoría de los tests que miraron no eran malos en absoluto. Básicamente, obtuvieron 130 exámenes comerciales para ver. La especificidad media y la sensibilidad de los exámenes basados en Eliza fue bastante buena. Y aquí hay un par de ellos que fueron particularmente buenos. El flujo lateral, bueno, no tan bueno, y tal vez no sea una sorpresa, pero fue ciertamente documentable. Y francamente, si van al sitio web de la FDA donde todo esto está publicado, verán que hubo algunos clunkers aquí que realmente no deberían estar utilizando para evaluar si alguien tiene un anticuerpo o no. Por supuesto, está todo bien decir que el test está disponible y el test es preciso, pero ¿qué significa? Todavía no sabemos si tener un anticuerpo está asociado con protección contra la reinfección. Creemos que eso es probable que sea el caso, pero no hay datos rigurosos para probarlo. Y no sabemos qué nivel podría ser necesario para que esa protección suceda o cuánto durará. Mucha gente ahora mira eso, creo que en unos meses más sabremos la respuesta a eso. Pero no permitan que nadie trate de decirles que, okay, tengo anticuerpos, así que ahora soy completamente seguro. No tengo que usar un máscara, no tengo que preocuparme por volver a estar expuesto. No sabemos eso todavía y necesitamos mucho más datos para poder decir exactamente cómo alguien debe cambiar su comportamiento una vez que se ha demostrado ser positivo de anticuerpos. O si deben cambiar su comportamiento en absoluto, ahora mismo, yo diría que no. Ned ha recientemente escrito otro artículo en Science, un editorial sobre COVID-19 y el cáncer. Y quiero terminar con un proyecto específico que NCI ha recientemente iniciado. Este fue un editorial preocupante que básicamente modeló lo que está sucediendo como resultado de COVID-19 con, como todos podemos ver, y todos ven en sus instituciones, una caída temprana en las diagnósticas de cáncer desde el inicio de la pandemia, porque la gente no viene para la inspección y la diagnosis y el tratamiento. Y uno puede mirar eso y decir, ¿cuál es la posibilidad de consecuencia de ese retraso en la reconocimiento en términos de muertes excesivas solo por cánceres de colarrecto y vientre? Y eso es lo que este diagrama en particular aspira a mostrar a lo largo del próximo 10 años. Y eso es profundamente preocupante, es una consecuencia de lo que ha sucedido debido a esta pandemia. Estos no son muertes que se van a contar como directamente debido al virus, pero de cierta manera son. Y tenemos que hacer todo lo posible ahora que las cosas están comenzando a abrirse, para catch up y asegurarnos de que aquellos que han esperado no continúen esperando aún más. Pero quiero decirles en el último punto aquí sobre un proyecto llamado ENCAPS, que es un esfuerzo que NCI ha hecho directamente, no para ver cómo COVID-19 ha retrasado la diagnosis, sino cómo ha afectado a la gente que tiene cáncer y que luego se infecta con este coronavirus. La idea es tratar de estudiar cómo esto puede desordenar la terapia directa al cáncer, cuáles podrían ser los resultados a largo plazo y cómo esto guiaría el cuidado futuro para las personas que adquieren esta enfermedad. Pueden ver el tipo de cosas que están siendo miradas en términos de parte de esto y lo que ya sabemos sobre ello, pero este va a ser un estudio muy importante para tratar de entender la interacción entre una enfermedad muy común, el cáncer, y una pandemia global muy inesperada, COVID-19. Bueno, espero que esos temas que he traído ante ustedes sean un poco relevantes a lo que el ACR está interesado. Pueden ver aquí nuevamente los objetivos de estudio de la historia natural para este esfuerzo ENCAPS. Estoy feliz de haber tenido la oportunidad de decirles un poco y nuevamente arrepentirme del hecho de que no todos podamos estar directamente juntos. Pero espero que a medida que su reunión avance, las oportunidades usuales para nuevas ideas, nuevas interacciones, nuevas colaboraciones, nuevos esfuerzos de equipo se formen a pesar de la conexión virtual. Y creo que aunque estemos en una circunstancia en la que la esperanza es una de esas cosas que es un poco difícil de encontrar para muchas personas que realmente han sido impactados por esto y tal vez impactados doblemente por las otras reconocimientos en nuestra nación ahora mismo sobre la evidencia de discriminación racial, que ha sido tan clara para todos nosotros a lo largo de las últimas semanas. Pero somos gente de esperanza, y como Peter Levi dice en esta cita que amo, "La esperanza en cada área de la vida es un privilegio que nos afeta a la acción. Sin acción, no hay esperanza." El ACR es una organización dedicada a la acción, NIH es una organización dedicada a la acción. Somos grandes socios, lo único más infeccioso que COVID-19 es la esperanza. Así que espero que todos tengan una buena dosis de ello y lo spreadan a lo largo del curso de esta reunión y de cualquier otra manera que toquen nuestras comunidades en este mundo en un momento en el que la esperanza es realmente necesaria. Con eso, diré gracias mucho y espero que tengan una reunión maravillosa.
Dr. Collins, a cargo de todos los oyentes del ACR, para esta especial presentación destacada. Nos hace más esperanzados que invertir en conocimiento y ciencia. It makes us all more hopeful that investing in knowledge, in science and in technology as the NIH has done will be the way that will get us out of the COVID-19 pandemic. This is a special address. There's not going to be a question and answer session. There's a lot of comments and questions that have been posted. We're going to transfer them all to Dr. Collins. But we want to really thank him for this cutting-edge description of what the NIH has been doing and him personally. So thank you for all of this effort. We'll now move on with the rest of the COVID-19 and cancer research session. The first speaker is Dr. George Casioris, his Senior Group Leader and Head of the Laboratory of Retroviral Immunology at the Francis Creek Institute in London. He's also Professor of Retrovirology at the Department of Medicine, Imperial College, London, and the recipient of a new Investigative Award from the Wellcome Trust. His presentation is titled "Pre-existing and de novo humoral immunity to SARS-CoV-2 in humans."
Before I start, I would like to thank the organizers for the invitation to share our data on SARS-CoV-2 serology, which I will do right after the disclosures. Immune cross-reactivity among seasonally spreading human coronaviruses has long been hypothesized to provide cross-protection, albeit transient, against infection with distinct seasonal coronavirus types. The question we set out to address is whether the introduction of SARS-CoV-2 in the human population occurred in the absence of pre-existing immunity, as it is currently thought. To determine the degree of cross-reactivity between seasonal coronaviruses and the recently introduced zoonotic coronavirus, SARS-CoV-2, we developed a sensitive flow cytometry-based assay for detection of SARS-CoV-2 binding antibodies. Sera from COVID-19 patients at University College London hospitals contain high levels of IgG, IgA, and IgM, represented by the heat map, recognizing the wild-type spike glycoprotein of SARS-CoV-2 expressed on the surface of HEK293 T cells, whereas control sera did not. Notably, sera from a proportion of patients with confirmed seasonal coronavirus infection collected before or during the early spread of SARS-CoV-2 in the UK also contained SARS-CoV-2 S-specific antibodies. However, the larger sera contained only low levels of S-specific IgG and no IgM or IgA antibodies, which clearly distinguished them from COVID-19 patient sera. The SARS-CoV-2 S protein is proteolytically processed into the S1 and S2 subunits that mediate target cell attachment and entry respectively. S2 exhibits a higher degree of homology between coronaviruses and S1, and it was likely to be the main target of cross-reactive antibodies. Indeed, whereas the addition of the combinant soluble S1 completely abolished binding of the S1-reactive CR3O22 antibody to S-expressing cells, from here, it did not affect the binding of human coronavirus patient sera. Binding of COVID-19 patient sera was reduced by approximately 30% by a soluble S1, indicating recognition of both S1 and S2. Consistent with these observations, sera from both COVID-19 and human coronavirus patients reacted comparably on ELISA-coated with a whole S protein, but only those from COVID-19 patients reacted with ELISA's coated or with the S1 subunit. This data highlighted extensive cross-reactivity of human coronavirus patient sera with SARS-CoV-2 spike and specific recognition of the S1 subunit only by COVID-19 patient sera. We next examined cohorts of patients from whom historical samples existed. These were primarily bone marrow cancer patients who received a bone marrow transplant and were monitored for viral infections. These two groups are such patients with and without recent infection with seasonal coronavirus. The third group is also SARS-CoV-2 uninfected individuals of unknown seasonal coronavirus A concurrent IgG, IgM, and IgA response to SARS-CoV-2 spike was not detected by FACS in any of the 95 samples from SARS-CoV-2 uninfected individuals. However, eight of the 95 control samples had S-specific IgG, shown in the red dots, but not IgM or IgA antibodies detectable by FACS or IgG antibodies detectable on an S-coated ELISA, which is shown down here. In contrast, none of the control samples had IgG antibodies detectable on ELISAS coated with a less conserved SARS-CoV-2 S1 or receptor binding domain, RBD, indicating cross-reactivity with conserved epitopes of S. Moreover, the three control samples with the highest cross-recognition of S on FACS or ELISA and the further four control samples also tested positive on ELISA coated with the combinant SARS-CoV-2 nuclear protein, which is also highly conserved among coronaviruses. Collectively, a total of 12 of 95 control samples exhibited IgG antibodies reactive with conserved epitopes of SARS-CoV-2 proteins, S2 and N. In contrast, IgG antibodies to SARS-CoV-2 S1 or RBD and IgG, IgM, and IgA antibodies to S detected by FACS were exclusive to COVID-19 patients. To validate these findings, we tested samples from an additional cohort of 50 SARS-CoV-2 uninfected pregnant women, all of which were negative when considering the presence of IgG, IgM, and IgA reactive antibodies. However, at least five of these samples, all collected in 2018, showed evidence for lower levels of SARS-CoV-2 S-reactive IgG only, which could not have been elicited by SARS-CoV-2 infection. An additional two samples reacted with N, but not S, on S1 or ELISA. This data suggests that the minimum of 10% of this cohort had pre-existing antibodies cross-reactive with SARS-CoV-2 proteins. And the flow cytometric profile of three of them is shown here. We also tested an extended set of sera from 135 COVID-19 patients. The vast majority of these, 128, had already detectable IgG, IgM, and IgA antibodies to SARS-CoV-2 S. The remaining seven samples, six of them, were collected between days two and 15 post-symptoms onset, and seropositivity assessed by FACS was 100% at later time points. Importantly, the concurrent IgG, IgM, and IgA response to SARS-CoV-2 S that distinguished COVID-19 patients was present at the latest time point exam, day 43 post-symptom onset, with no evidence of decline during this period. Of note, a single 60-year-old patient in this cohort sampled on day 29 post-symptom onset, indicated here with the red symbol. At a time point where all other patients had seroconverted, had SARS-CoV-2 S-reactive IgG, but not IgM or IgA antibodies. And this profile was more consistent with an amnestic response to seasonal coronaviruses than a de novo response to SARS-CoV-2. Inspection of patient records indicated that this was a bone marrow transplant recipient who tested positive for seasonal coronavirus infection in February 2020 and subsequently contracted SARS-CoV-2, testing positive by RTQPCR the following month. Serum samples taken around the diagnosis of human coronavirus and SARS-CoV-2 infections were negative for SARS-CoV-2 S-reactive antibodies, likely due to the immunosuppressed state of this patient. However, serum taken three weeks later contained SARS-CoV-2 S-reactive IgG in the absence of other antibody classes, which was not consistent with a de novo response. This patient described only mild COVID-19 symptoms that did not necessitate hospitalization, but appeared chronically infected with SARS-CoV-2, having tested repeatedly positive for viral RNA over a month. Although the data presented here and emerging in the recent and unrefered literature suggest extensive immune cross-reactivity between SARS-CoV-2 and seasonal coronaviruses, the potential consequences of pre-existing immunity for the cause of SARS-CoV-2 infection or susceptibility to COVID-19 are not yet fully known. One of the ways in which seasonal coronavirus elicited antibodies might protect against SARS-CoV-2 is inhibition of entry into the target cell. SARS-CoV-2 binding to unidentified cellular receptor, ACE2, is mediated by the RBD. As seasonal coronavirus-induced antibodies cross-react with S2 but not the RBD, they would not be expected to block ACE2/RBD interactions. However, reports of SARS-CoV-2 neutralizing antibodies that do not block RBD/ACE2 interaction are emerging, and neutralizing antibodies targeting the S2 subunit of SARS-coronaviruses have already been described. It is therefore plausible that seasonal coronavirus patient sera targeting the S2 also neutralize without affecting binding to ACE2, perhaps by interfering with alternative routes of viral entry. Indeed, entry of SARS-CoV-2 can also be facilitated by the alternative receptor CD147 and possibly also by receptor-independent mechanisms, as has been described for other coronaviruses. To examine the ability of human coronavirus patient sera to inhibit viral entry, we used HEK293 T cells as targets. These cells lack ACE2 expression, but are nevertheless permissive to entry of lentiviral particles pseudotyped with SARS-CoV-2 spike, which is shown here. Moreover, transduction efficiency of HEK293 T cells by SARS-CoV-2 S pseudotypes was not further increased by ACE2 overexpression, highlighting ACE2-independent entry. These cells do, however, express high levels of BSG encoding CD147. Sera from seroconverted COVID-19 patients efficiently neutralized SARS-CoV-2 S pseudotypes, whereas those from COVID-19 patients that had not yet produced antibodies did not. Surprisingly, sera from human coronavirus-infected patients that contained SARS-CoV-2 S reactive antibodies neutralized these pseudotypes with efficiencies comparable with sera from seroconverted COVID-19 patients. None of the sera neutralized lentiviral particles pseudotyped with a controlled glycoprotein of a sickle stomatitis virus, which is shown on this slide. Titers of neutralizing antibodies in COVID-19 patient sera correlated well with titers of SARS-CoV-2 RBD binding antibodies determined by ELISA and even better with SARS-CoV-2 S binding antibodies determined by FACS. Despite the low numbers, the correlation between neutralizing antibodies and seasonal coronavirus patient sera with SARS-CoV-2 S binding IgG antibodies determined by FACS was even stronger. Collectively, this data indicated that seasonal coronavirus elicited cross-reactive antibodies interfere with at least one mode of SARS-CoV-2 entry into target cells. Cross-reactivity between seasonal coronavirus and the pandemic coronavirus needs to be carefully considered in the development and interpretation of assays for precise detection of SARS-CoV-2 specific antibodies. Public health measures intended to prevent the spread of SARS-CoV-2 will also prevent the spread and consequently maintenance of herd immunity to seasonal coronaviruses. It is therefore imperative that any effect, positive or negative, of pre-existing seasonal coronavirus elicited immunity on the natural course of SARS-CoV-2 infection is fully delineated. And this is what we are doing at the moment. Finally, I would like to thank the numerous collaborators in the lab listed here, other labs at the Francis Creek Institute and the support facilities, and of course, our clinical collaborators at UCL and UCL hospitals who helped from this work. And thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, George, for this very informative presentation. We have some questions from the audience. Sorry, I... So the first one, it was an early question during your presentation that probably you have already addressed. If one had SARS immunity through the prior exposure, would that potentially help against
That is a very good question. We suspect that is the case, but we haven't got the evidence to prove it yet.
And that will be really interesting. And based on your data, I promise him, at least with that one case that you described, do you use HTG assay?
I'm sorry, say again?
Do you use HTG assay? That's the question that's posed.
I'm not sure which assay that is.
Okay, then we'll try to address that some other time. Is there any titulation for ELISA IgGs?
ELISA IgG? So we have used a number of different in-house ELISAs for IgG, different antigens, and it's all to do with what antigen you coat your plates with. But I'm not sure I follow the question.
Another question is, is human seasonal coronavirus infections provide some protection against SARS-CoV-2? Why do people show such severe systemic symptoms?
Okay, so I think there's a number of ways to answer this. We don't really know the full effect of previous immunity elicited by exposure to seasonal coronaviruses. What we have done since we recorded that presentation is we looked in different age groups. So the frequency with which we are infected with seasonal coronaviruses is very different. So children, adolescents get infected really frequently, whereas adults are not so much. And in the data I presented, we estimated that the proportion of people with pre-existing immunity is about 7% in adults. We've now had a chance to look in younger age groups, and that is an astonishing 60%. So if you look at those two things together, you could hypothesize that children and adolescents are somehow protected by having high levels of immunity to seasonal coronaviruses. But again, this is an assumption at this stage. You could also envisage how this pre-existing immunity might make matters worse, for example, by making it too strong a response to a virus that wouldn't harm you on its own or the wrong type of response. If you make... If you make, if you target the S2 with not the most potent neutralizing antibodies at the expense of a more protective response to S1, you could see how this pre-existing immunity might harm than hell. So we don't really understand if having the pre-existing immunity is always good, but we are convinced it is having an effect on the way people respond to COVID-19.
It's another question. Do you know what may be the receptor for the pseudotype virus entry into H293 cell negative? H293 cells are negative for H2?
No, we don't, and we don't even know if it is receptor-mediated. Again, since the recording of the presentation, there's been reports of additional accessory molecules like neuropeinin-1 now, and these cells do express neuropeinin-1 at high levels, and they express CD147. But I have to say, we were concerned at the time this could be a pseudotyping artifact, because this is an unusual way of entry. And since then, we have repeated these experiments with authentic SARS coronavirus 2 infection of Vero E6 cells, which again, it's another system people use. It's not perfect, because these are not even human cells, but in that case, it is entirely H2-mediated entry, and we get the same result. So I don't think it matters which receptor it is, or whether it is receptor-mediated entry. The antibodies can have a similar effect.
There's a lot of questions coming in as you're asking. First, your presentation was submitted a week or two weeks ago, so it's amazing how the field has gone so fast. I'm going to ask the last question, and then we'll have to move on, and we'll transfer to you the rest of the questions. The question is, how could an IgG against seasonal coronavirus protect against SARS-CoV-2 airway infections?
Yes, well, we don't know that it does. Perhaps that's not where it's acting. It could be that in addition to having a pre-existing IgG response, you have a pool of memory B cells that are faster to respond to infection with a pandemic strain. So although they may not prevent the infection altogether, they will be fast enough to prevent further spread and ameliorate the symptoms. We know that cross-protection among seasonal coronaviruses exists, but is never complete, is never sterilizing, and is never long-lasting. That said, it does provide a certain benefit, and we suspect the same will be true of cross-protection with the pandemic strain. It's not going to stop the acquisition of infection, the infection of the airways, but it will stop or limit viral spread.
Thank you very much, George. So we'll move on to the next presentation. The next presentation is by John Wery. He's the Barbara Richard Schifferin President's Distinguished Professor, Chair of the Department of Systems Pharmacology and Translational Therapeutics in the Pearlman School of Medicine, and Director of the UPenn Institute of Immunology. Among others, he is the recipient of the Cancer Research Institute Fred Old Award for New Discoveries Immunology. His presentation is titled "Immune Health Profiling of COVID-19." John?
Well, thank you, and to present our work on the immunology of COVID-19 disease. So a few disclosures, none of these should be relevant for today's talk. So we all know that COVID-19 has become a global pandemic with dramatic impacts not only on daily life, but really severe manifestation of disease in hospitalized patients. What we wanted to do was try to understand the relationship of the immune response or the immune system to this respiratory viral infection. There's some information known about this, and there's some evidence in the literature that this disease is characterized by an elevated inflammatory response. Indeed, there have been some trials blocking inflammation, particularly blocking IL-6, that have shown some promise, but these therapies don't work in all patients. There's some evidence from small studies, case reports, and small cohorts of perhaps T-cell activation in these patients, but there's also evidence for hypofunctional T-cells or perhaps T-cell exhaustion, so the exact nature of the T-cell response still remains at least partially unclear. On top of that, these patients are clinically characterized by lymphopenia, and the relationship of lymphopenia to T-cell activation also remains unclear. Plasm blast have been described in the blood of these patients, and antibody is common in hospitalized patients, including some emerging evidence for neutralizing antibody in those patients, but these patients are still sick. Moreover, if you give patients convalescent serum containing antibodies and neutralizing antibodies, it can have positive effects, suggesting that the immune response generated in hospitalized patients, despite the fact that there seem to be responses recognizing the virus, seems to be insufficient in some way. So the question for us was, what is a typical response, a typical immune response to COVID-19 disease in hospitalized patients? To address this question, we built a translational immunology profiling pipeline with great help from Nula Meyer, a critical care physician at Penn, and collaborations with Mike Betzlab at Penn to develop immune profiling approaches. The work in my lab that I'm going to tell you about today was really driven by seven amazing individuals in the lab who are all co-first authors of a study that was just submitted: Divich Matthew, Josephine Giles, Amy Baxter, Ally Greenplate, Jennifer Wu, Cecile Alanio, and Derek Ulrich. So what we did is we built a sample acquisition and profiling pipeline that allowed us to obtain samples from 70 healthy controls, about 50 recovered patients that have recovered from laboratory-diagnosed COVID-19 disease, and about 140 to 150 hospitalized COVID patients. There are additional cohorts, including pediatric and cancer cohorts that are currently being developed. The key questions we wanted to address are what type of immune response exists in COVID-19 patients? Are there common pathways of immune activation or response? And how do these immune responses relate to clinical features of disease? And so we built this profiling pipeline on about 150 COVID-19 patients, 125 of whom were, had samples available to go into the flow cytometric profiling pipeline that I'm going to describe. These patients were characterized clinically with clinical markers of inflammation, and there are about 50 clinical features of disease that have been acquired, and I'm not going to go through those in detail here, but they will feature into an integrative model towards the end. So we're able to examine CD4, CD8 T-cells, and B-cells. Other studies from Mike Betzlab are examining the non-lymphocyte compartment in more detail. But I'll just tell you about the changes in the B and T cell compartment in this current talk. Indeed, when you examine the lymphocytes, B-cell numbers or B-cell frequencies in the peripheral blood are unchanged, and yet the T-cell numbers are reduced. This reduction in T-cell frequency in PBMCs actually results in a compensatory increase in frequency in the non-B, non-T compartment. We think this is just a proportional change rather than an absolute expansion of this compartment based on the absolute numbers of cells recovered. However, this T-cell lymphopenia, although it occurs for CD4 T-cells, is actually more dramatic and more consistent on the CD8 T-cell side. In fact, if you examine this by CD4 to CD8 T-cell ratio, you'll see that there's a greater effect on CD8 T-cells compared to CD4 T-cells in at least some of the patients. And overall, if you do the kinds of things that immunologists do and look at subsets of T and B cells, you find that there are some perturbations in affector memory or TEMRA populations of CD4 and CD8 T-cells, or central memory populations of CD4s, and reduced memory B-cells and increased plasm blasts, that I'll talk about in just a minute. But we really wanted to use this approach to try to identify antiviral responses that may be occurring in these patients. And so we used an approach that's been used in a variety of other settings, including viral infections in humans, but also anti-cancer responses now, to capture the induction of an activated T-cell compartment that's a surrogate for antigen-specific T-cell responses. While we don't have tetramers or antigen-specific reactions yet for these patients, in other settings, this approach captures many, if not most, of the antiviral responses. So we looked at co-expression of HLA-DR and CD38 or KI67 in CD8 T-cells and CD4 T-cells in these patients. In healthy subjects or recovered subjects, there's a low level of this T-cell activation, whereas in the COVID patients, you see some patients have a robust induction of T-cell activation and T-cell proliferation, consistent with the idea that these patients are mounting an antiviral T-cell response. However, there's also a subset of COVID patients that seem to have no difference compared to healthy controls or recovered donors, and that is, don't seem to have induction of an activated T-cell compartment. So these responses that are increased in the COVID patients are typical of an antiviral response observed in other settings, but the responses are highly heterogeneous, with very robust responses observed in some patients, lower or even no responses observed in others. But we wanted to take advantage of the high-dimensional nature of these data, and so we integrated this flow cytometry analysis and projected into a T-SNE space where you could actually see the overall changes in the CD8 T-cell compartment. And this sort of central valley here in the healthy donors and recovered donors that's filled in the COVID patients really contains a lot of the activated and responding T-cells in this disease. And that valley contains these KI67, CD38, and HLA-DR populations, as well as other populations of interest for this disease. And just pointing out the bottom here, when you cluster these data, you can identify a cluster, Cluster 10, in red up at the top, that actually contains a lot of these proliferating activated T-cells. You can do the same thing for the B-cell compartment, and what emerges from that are, again, very large changes in the responding B-cell compartment, especially in this upper-right quadrant, which contains these plasm blasts. In these patients, you see a very robust plasm blast response in many patients that can rival what's seen in acute Ebola or dengue infection. These plasm blasts typically, in response to a normal acute viral infection in humans like influenza virus, might range to 5% to 15% of circulating B-cells, and here it can be above 30%, 40%, even 50% of circulating B-cells. So we wanted to ask about other immune responses that might be involved in coordinating B-cell responses, and so we examined follicular helper cells that could be detected in the peripheral blood using CXCR5 and PD1 to capture the circulating follicular helper pool, and then from those cells, looking at the activated fraction that typically correlates best with humoral responses and germinal center responses. So in those activated TFH, you see that a subset of patients has highly robust induction of activated TFH, where other patients do not. So we wanted to ask whether these plasm blast or TFH responses had a relationship to the antibody that's seen in these patients. And indeed, in our patients on the vertical axis here, you see that in the hospital, most, the vast majority of patients have detectable antibody against the SARS-CoV-2 spike protein. However, that antibody response does not correlate with the plasm blast response in these patients, although it does correlate with the activated TFH populations in the peripheral blood, both for IgG and IgM, not shown here. So this suggests that some of the plasm blast response may be specific for other proteins of the virus, or could be responding in a bystander way, perhaps driven by inflammation. So what we next wanted to do was ask whether this heterogeneous response in COVID-19 patients had any relationship to the severity of disease and how disease changed over time. And so we used an NIH severity score that ranged from seven or eight, which is mild disease or no disease, to one, which is mortality, and two, which is very severe disease hospitalized, intubated patients. And indeed, as you look across this disease severity spectrum, you see that more severe disease correlates with more severe lymphopenia. Again, that lymphopenia seems to be more prominent on the CD8 side, especially in less severe disease. And that results in a compensatory increase in frequency in the non-B, non-T cells. Similarly, if you look at T-cell activation, an increase in disease severity correlates with more proliferating or activated CD4 and CD8 T-cells, and likely a trend for increases in plasm blast, though it is not significant, likely because of the high heterogeneity that we see in these responses. So we wanted to then ask whether these immune features actually segregated patients into different groups. And so we manually selected a series of about a dozen or 15 specific. So we turned to an approach called UMAP that allowed us to embed essentially 200 or so immune features captured in this high-dimensional immune profiling, and mapped that out in ways that actually related the immune features that were connected to each other. And so in doing that, you actually reduce the high-dimensional space into two different components that capture the most immune variation in these patients. And what you can sort of infer from this UMAP projection is Component 1 seems to have some relationship to disease severity, perhaps. And in fact, if you plot out disease severity versus Component 1 score, what you find is that there's a very nice relationship between the score of Component 1 and disease severity, whereas Component 2 is orthogonal to that axis, and so captures other features of immune variation that are unrelated to disease severity. And in fact, you can look at individual features of the immune system, so again, going back to the last slide, and ask how they project into this UMAP space. And for example, CD4 T-cell activation maps sort of in the diagonal direction, that is, it's contributing to both Component 1 and Component 2, whereas T-bet-positive CD8 T-cells are really contributing to Component 2, not Component 1. Plasma blasts actually are contributing a little bit more to Component 1. So you can then ask, you can break this down in different ways. You can ask about those immune features in a more robust way, going back to sort of the flow sum clustering. And indeed, you can break down Component 1 and Component 2 into their individual discrete immune features from CD8 T-cells, CD4 T-cells, and B-cells. And just summarizing this data in the interest of time, Component 1 really seems to capture kind of a TEMRA-like CD8 T-cells and highly activated CD8 T-cells here in this cluster 14, as well as highly activated CD4 T-cells in clusters 13 and 14, whereas Component 2 captures different populations of CD8 T-cells here in this cluster 11, these T-bet-positive CD8 T-cells, a little bit less activated CD4s. On the B-cell side, the plasm blast really aligns with Component 1, whereas Component 2 captures other features of the B-cell compartment. You can then use this to actually relate back to disease severity and other features of the clinical measures of disease. And in fact, as the UMAP projection seemed to indicate, Component 1 really captures disease severity features across here, highlighted in this APACHY score of multi-organ failure, the NIH disease severity index, as well as other features like advanced age, perhaps levels of IL-6, and overall white blood cell count. In contrast, Component 1 is not related to many of these features of disease severity, but is negatively correlated with NSAID use, perhaps future treatment with remdesivir, which may have to do with the way patients are selected. But overall, what this analysis really suggests is that there are two different immunotypes of response to COVID-19 disease. One immunotype contains highly activated CD4 and CD8 T-cells, I didn't point this out, but altered TFH, really kind of an absence of the highly activated TFH, a TEMRA population and plasm blast. This immunotype seems to be correlated with disease severity and other features of inflammation in these patients. There's also a second immunotype that's characterized by T-bet-positive CD4 and CD8 affector T-cells, T-bet-positive memory B-cells, as well as proliferating memory B-cells. This immunotype is actually less associated with disease severity and might actually pick up other features of clinical disease. Now, that was very interesting, but as I pointed out earlier in the talk, there's also another group of patients, and those are the patients that actually seem to almost lack a T-cell or B-cell response to this infection. And so really suggested that because this UMAP embedding is driven by the immune variation, if there's no immune variation, or the immune variation is very similar to what you see in healthy controls, there might be another immunotype sort of embedded in this UMAP projection. And indeed, if you just identify these patients by taking essentially the intersection of nonresponsiveness in CD4, CD8, and B-cell compartment, you can map out patients that have very low activation of the immune system onto this UMAP projection. And indeed, those patients, their UMAP location is negatively correlated with Component 1 and Component 2, suggesting that those Component 1 and 2 immunotypes are not accounting for this third group of patients. Those patients, actually, their immunotype or their immune features are also highly negatively correlated with the NIH severity index, suggesting that, again, this is a different pattern of immune response or immune non-response. Now, what I'll point out is that in this immunotype 3, there's a patient who succumbed to infection, and even over here, if you look just in the Component 2, the immunotype 2 direction, there are these triangles which reflect patients who have succumbed to infection, as well as on this Component 1 axis, you see patients who have succumbed to infection. So patients can die from this infection for multiple distinct reasons. They can die with an association of this immunotype or Component 1, they can die with an association of this Component 2, or they can even succumb to infection in this immunotype 3 scenario. So let me just summarize what we've seen here on this slide. So the summary of the study is here on the left, but let me walk through the verbiage here. So we see a lot of immune as well as clinical heterogeneity in COVID-19 hospitalized patients. There's a CD8 biased lymphopenia that's somewhat unusual and really typical of very severe viral infections. There's a really massive plasm blast response that's rivaling what's seen really in acute Ebola or dengue infection. That plasm blast response is surprisingly stable over time, as is the activated T-cell response, which I didn't show you in the data in the interest of time. We identified three different immunotypes that are really defined by different immune features and linked to different clinical presentations. One of these is really linked very tightly to high levels of inflammation and inflammatory-type diseases. Those links between the immunotypes and the clinical features might actually suggest ways to tailor different immune interventions to have the most effect on patients that actually have a type of that actually have a type of immune response that might benefit from interventions, such as suppressing versus activating the immune system in immunotype one versus immunotype three. I'll stop there and acknowledge really a very large group of people that have contributed to these studies, including the seven co first authors of this paper that I mentioned, a lot of other members of the lab that have contributed, Nula Meyer, who played an immense role in helping to coordinate these efforts. The Betts Lab have been a partner in this throughout the whole study. A number of really important people that played a role in what we're calling the COVID blood processing unit, and then the clinical coordinators that helped actually recruit a lot of these patients. And I'll stop there, and if there's time, take questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, John. I think we'll have your backup slide. So there's several questions that have been posed. So let's see. Ranties is reported to be a hundred times normal levels intrusively of COVID nineteen patients. Any comments from Ranties on COVID nineteen?
Yeah, thanks, Tony, and thanks for the question. And I also want to thank the organizers. I think I lost a sentence or two along here as we try to figure out the, how to do these recorded talks. Yeah, Ranties is quite interesting. The C C R two, C C R five binding chemokines are clearly up in the blood of these patients and may play a role in recruiting not only activated T cells to the lungs or the respiratory tissue, but also in recruiting myeloid cells. And on autopsy, there's a strong association between extensive myeloid cell infiltration and some aspects of severe disease. So when you look in the blood at plasma cytokines and chemokines, not only Ranties, but also other C C R two, five binding chemokines are up, as are C X C L nine and C X C L ten, which can also have a similar role using different chemokine receptors. So I think there's a lot of interest in understanding whether those pathways can be targeted, whether it's targeting Ranties, or C C R two, or C C R five, or all of the above. I think remains unclear, but there are some hints in literature now coming out about potential effectiveness of blocking those pathways. I would just say that, you know, our data would suggest that those pathways will be important in some, but not all patients, and we may have some hints about where to target therapies like that.
Another question is, is there anything known about NK cell dynamics during COVID infection?
Yes, yeah, great question. Thank you. So what I presented here is mostly focused on lymphocytes, B cells and T cells. The non-B, non-T compartment also has some very interesting perturbations. There's a companion paper to this work, and both actually are available in Bio Archive already, that goes into the NK cell dynamics a little bit more from Mike Betts Lab. And there's also a nice work out of Stanford as well, looking at some of the changes in the NK cells from Catherine Blish. They do seem to be dynamically regulated, maybe a switch in sort of the mature versus immature type of NK cell, as well as some perturbations in C D sixteen, the F C receptor on NK cells, which may be relevant in settings of having antibody available.
Another question is about Leron Lima, which is an antibody that has been negatively shown to have positive effects on critically ill COVID nineteen. That's an antibody to pro one forty K chain. I'm sorry, I'm trying to operate. Do you know this antibody?
Yeah, I think so. I think this is an antibody against C C R five, if I'm not mistaken. And so would fall in sort of the answer to the previous question about targeting the C C R five, C C R two, Ranties pathway. And so yes, there are some emerging hints that targeting this pathway may have some clinical benefit. I think matching those kind of therapies to patients who are most likely to benefit them from them would be where our data suggests an opportunity in profiling patients prior to putting them or randomizing into different arms of a clinical trial for something like that. I would, you know, our data kind of suggests that patients in that immunotype three may either have no benefit of an approach like this, or in fact, if the immune response is just getting going or just starting, that blunting interactions between chemokines and, you know, their ability to recruit cells might actually not be, not be something you want to do. So, but the vast majority of patients do show heightened inflammation that would suggest drugs like this may be valuable.
Last question is, is there any correlate between viral load and different immunotypes?
Yeah, it's a great question. We struggle with this all the time. I think the field in general has a few major blind spots, and I would propose that this is one of them. We just don't have data on viral load, because many of our clinical tests are not quite plus minus. We do get some information on either cycle number, or we're getting a little bit more quantitative information as we go, but not very good data. We certainly don't have great data over time, and it's very hard actually to do very accurate longitudinal viral load measurements in the respiratory tract, especially in patients who are intubated, where the airflow through the nasal passage, where you're doing the viral testing, may actually under represent the viral load in the lungs, because patients are not breathing through their nasal passages anymore. So it's a big open question. We'd love to address that.
Thank you very much, John. So we'll move on with the session. The next speaker is Miriam Merat. She's Professor of Oncological Science in the Departments of Medicine and Immunology, and member of the Immunology Institute at the Tisch Cancer Institute at the Mount Sinai School of Medicine in New York. She is the recipient of the William B. Colley Award for distinguished research in basic immunology, and a member of the United States National Academy of Science. Miriam's presentation is titled Myeloid Cells in COVID nineteen.
So I would like to thank Dr. Antoni Ribas for your invitation to speak at this AACR symposium. And today I'll be talking about pathogenic inflammation in COVID nineteen patients. So infection with a novel coronavirus called SARS-CoV two leads to an extremely heterogeneous disease called COVID nineteen. And most of the infected children, or an eighty percent of infected adults will develop to mild disease or asymptomatic disease. However, twenty percent of the infected adults will require hospitalization, and most of the hospitalized patients will develop a moderate disease and end up in discharge three to four days after hospitalization. However, a subset of these patients will develop severe disease, a severe disease with head or gut damage that could, that could lead to death. Unfortunately, New York State has been at the epicenter of the COVID pandemic in the U S, and Mount Sinai, the institution where I work, has been at the epicenter of this epicenter. And we have hospitalized almost seven thousand patients between February twenty seventh and January fifth. Twenty percent of these patients have been admitted to the ICU. Twenty-four percent of the patients have died, and five percent have been readmitted either at the ER or the hospital, and many deaths have been associated with severe inflammation and bodily complication. So it is now clear that inflammatory response correlate with disease severity in COVID nineteen patients, and this had led to a frenzy of clinical trials to block inflammatory pathway with the conundrum, which is that excessive immunosuppression can promote viral spread, and therefore inflammation blockages need to be strategic and inhibits pathogenic inflammation without compromising antiviral immunity. So the focus of the Sinai Immunology Group has been to predict, prevent and treat pathogenic inflammation, to reduce COVID death toll while waiting for curative or preventative therapy to become available in the clinic. I lead the Mount Sinai Human Immune Monitoring Center with my colleague Sasha Nyatic, and the goal of this platform is to perform high dimensional profiling of disease lesions, and we have contributed to several consortia to map immune response to several viruses. But we also have used this platform to map quite extensively pathogenic inflammation in several human diseases, including patients with skin inflammatory disease, I B D, adiosclerosis, cancer and cytokine. So we have now redeployed the H I M C platform to serve the COVID research effort with two goals, was to establish a rapid cytokine test to predict pathogenic inflammation, and also to build a longitudinal collection of COVID nineteen biospecimens to identify immune correlate of disease severity and identify rational based immunotherapy strategy. So a few years ago, we had been tasked by a very talented oncologist, Amir Parak, to develop a rapid cytokine test that will help predict pathogenic inflammation in patients treated with CAR T cells. And so very early during, and we in fact have used to do this test at this ELA platform, which is a microfliodic ELISA. And we've used this platform because of the solidity of this result, and also the fast turnaround of the result that can be obtained in three to four hours. So very early during the pandemic, we decided to use the ELA platform to measure four different cytokines, I L six, I L eight, I L one beta, T N F alpha, because of their role in tissue damage, but also because there is a variable drug target to block each of these cytokines, and therefore the result could be actionable. We then transferred this assay from the Human Immune Monitoring Center to the Clinical Pathology Lab using the Emergency Use Authorization Act. And here I would like to thank my colleague Martin Putnam and Rajiv Pandey from Protein Simple that really facilitated this effort by providing an instrument and also several cartridges that really helped really speed the establishment of this assay in the clinical laboratory. And this assay was then prescribed through Epic. And because it was prescribed through Epic, we were able to test more than fourteen hundred patients on the day of hospitalization. We have now repeated this test in more than two hundred eighteen patients. In total, we performed more than nineteen hundred tests, and we had clinical outcome on all of these lesions. And I'm going to briefly now summarize the results of this study that has been really led by an extraordinary colleague of mine, Sasha Nyatic, with the help of his students, Diane Delvalle. And the first thing that Sasha did is he compared the systemic level of cytokine with those that are present in patients that are treated with CAR T cells and either develop or didn't develop C R S, and also with healthy donors. And what we observed is that already on the day of hospitalization, systemic level of I L six, I L eight and T N F alpha were in the range of patients with C R S, suggesting that already when patients arrive, they are quite inflamed. Now, what he also did is that he correlated level of the cytokine with disease outcome, and first with disease survival. And even after adjusting for sex, age, race, ethnicity and comorbidity, what he observed is that level of these four different cytokines correlated quite strongly with poor survival. Now, when he adjusted for all cytokine level, inflammatory marker and comorbidity, now I L eight and I L one beta relevance dropped. However, I L six and T N F alpha remain strongly correlated with poor survival, that was also the case with disease severity, suggesting that I L six and T N F alpha are independent predictors of poor disease outcome. What's surprising is that this level of cytokine remain quite stable during the disease course. Of course, this is not so granular, and there are some patients that go up and down, but overall, the teams that the cytokine profile are quite stable, despite the fact that some treatment modulating in fight the cytokine level. So here you can see that patients on steroid were able to have reduced I L six cytokine level. Ranties, we can also reduce I L six cytokine. However, here you can see a negative actual increase of I L six in patients treated with I L six receptor blockade. And today Sasha was telling me that when he looked among patients on steroid, what he observed is that patients on dexametazone had the lower level of I L six cytokine in the sera, and I L eight also suggesting that maybe the reason why dexametazone can be, can be beneficial to patients is by this effective modulation of systemic inflammation. So in summary, what I've showed you is that I L six and T N F alpha are independent prognostic factors of disease severity that can help stratify potential patients to maximize response to immunomodulatory treatment on the day of hospitalization. Remember, all these measurements were done on the day of hospitalization. Cytokine now combination blockade could benefit a subset of patients, because if I L six and T N F are independent, therefore they could potentially reflect the different pathogenesis pathway. And we are currently trying to refine this rapid test based on the results of proteomic profiling using Olic and Somalogics, and I'll be talking about Olic in a minute. Because not all immunase can be prescribed through Epic, we had to build a research collection, which was not simple to do during a pandemic. And here I teamed up with an extraordinary colleague, Alex Charney, who in fact was able to redeploy more than sixty volunteers to serve this collection. And the pictures of the different teams that we put together, pictures of the consenting team, a team of runner, the labeling team that are labeling hundreds of tubes per day, and also the different shift of processing team that were rotating throughout the day to process all these samples. And we've collected several cohorts, and today I'll be speaking mostly about our hospitalized cohort, where we were able to collect more than seven hundred patients. We also collected patients on clinical trials. We collected also children that are either acutely infected with COVID two, or these kids that develop this multi-inflammatory syndrome, and I'll be talking about this at the end. We are also in the process of collecting convalescent patients. So we would be collecting all patients that are discharged from the hospital, but also patients that have not been hospitalized but have confirmed COVID two infection. And we are also in the process of collecting two hundred healthcare workers. So this is the collection scheme of our hospitalized cohort. We collected more than five hundred COVID nineteen patients. We also collected patients that were hospitalized, but not for COVID infection at the same time of our COVID nineteen patients. We also collected healthy control. We collected these patients at five different time points. This is a summary of the number of patients we collected at the different time points. You can see that the number of patients drops significantly at the four post-hospitalization, because this is where most of the patients get discharged. Now, in all of these patients, we collected nasal swab, P B M C, sera plasma and RNA. In a subset, we also collected stools and urine. In a subset of patients, we also collected bronchoalveolar lavage, which was done in collaboration with my colleagues Charles Powell and Jamie Hooks. And in a subset of patients, we also collected tissue from different organs. And this is thanks to the heroic effort done by Marie Fox and Carlos Gordon in pathology. So what assay did we perform? We performed longitudinal assay on the entire cohort and deep profiling assay on the subset of patients. And I'm going to describe today the core immunase that were applied at scale to all longitudinal patient samples, which included a targeted proteomic profiling using Olics, which looked at nineteen two soluble protein biomarker from only two microliters of serum. These are the data that we are using to refine our fast turnover cytokine monitoring test using the ELA platform. Also performed standardize whole blood site of analysis with forty parameters comprehensive immune cell profiling from only three hundred microliter of whole blood. We also performed phosphoprotein or phosphostat on this whole blood, not on all the cohort too. And we also performed whole blood reticular mix on all of these. So I'm going to spend some time describing the results of our targeted proteomic study. The study was done by a very talented student in my lab, Steven Chen, in collaboration with fantastic computational immunologist, Sophie Kenigsberg. And what they did is, so they first clustered in an unbiased manner all the protein, which are mostly inflammatory protein that are expressed in the patients in an unbiased manner. So they are looking for protein that are co-expressed together in the same sample. Here, I'm showing you the raw data of this analysis. So we analyzed four hundred fifty COVID patients at different time points. So these include fifteen hundred samples. Each row is an analyze, each column is one sample, that either patients or time point. And the counts are normalized for either positive and negative control that are present in each plate. So this and bioanalysis revealed twenty clusters, twenty clusters of co-expressed inflammatory molecule. And then they projected these results into the disease severity score that in fact segregate based on outcome, patients with moderate disease, severe disease, or severe with head and gut damage. And to have a surprise, what we saw is that clusters, a group of clusters seems to be enriched in patients with either severe or severe disease with organ damage and/or patients with moderate disease. Quite surprising to me, I have to say. And then the next question we asked is whether these clusters were already present on the day of hospitalization. And the response was yes, most of all of these clusters in fact were already present. And then we asked, okay, so now can we predict? And then we asked, okay, so now can we predict based on cluster distribution here what patients are going to develop, patients are going to develop a different disease course? And the pictures that we had is very similar to what I've showed you before. Is that cluster two to six is highly enriched in patients that are going to develop, in patients that are going to develop a very severe disease or die. The cluster fifteen to twenty, or let's say sixteen to twenty are also enriched in patients that are going to develop severe disease, whereas eight to fourteen are more enriched in patients that are going to develop a moderate disease. Okay, so now let's dive into the molecular composition of these analytes in each of these clusters. So here, what I want to show you in green, what you can see is patients with severe disease and organ damage in red, patients with severe disease. When you look at both of them, you can see there is very different cytokine or chemokine expression pattern. So the one, the groups with severe disease and end organ damage, you can see that there is a high enrichment in mucosal inflammatory cytokine, including seventeen A and C, CCL twenty-eight, CCL twenty-five. There was also strong increase of IL-18, which reflects inflammasome activation. And these are absent in patients that develop severe disease. Now, with the exception maybe of IL-6, which was present in both groups. In fact, IL-6 is just here, next to it, present in both groups. But that's not the case for TNF. TNF is here, there is some movement that happened here. So TNF, highly enriched in the severe with end organ damage, but almost absent in the patients with severe disease. Which seems that here, these patients are in fact low inflammation. But in both cases, what we saw is a high enrichment in this group of analyte that are enriched with molecules that we know are increased in tissue damage. So for example, this molecule, OSM, we saw was highly increased in patients with severe inflammatory bowel disease, same with N-HG, TGF or HGF. As if despite the fact that they had low inflammation, they ended up developing a tissue damage. Okay, now you may say, well, these patients are undergoing developing a very severe disease. So all these clusters are going to move and acquire these new clusters that are associated with organ damage. And this was not the case. And this is very interesting, that this inflammation pattern that I'm showing you here seems to be quite stable. So we saw very little movement of these clusters moving during disease course. Okay, suggesting that maybe they reflect different pathogenesis. Now, when we look at the patients with moderate disease, what we saw, that we saw very different signatures. So first, we saw a very high enrichment of IL-12. IL-12 is a key cytokine to promote the priming of a TH1 response, which is critical for antiviral immunity. We saw also enrichment of plate free ligand, which is a cytokine that's very important for the differentiation of dendritic cell. Dendritic cells are key, antigen presenting cells that stimulate potent T-cell response. We saw a lot of molecules that suggested a strong T-cell activation, including interferon gamma, 41BB, PDL-1, CD40, which is a strong co-simulatory molecule, CD5, but also expression of this molecule, IL-15 RA, which is often, which is likely expressed on dendritic cells and is known to transpresent on IL-15. It's also a key molecule to promote effector CDAT cell differentiation. Okay, so however, what was very striking is that this was the only group that lacked this damage signature, right? So the damage signature was present in the severe, severe with organ damage, the severe was completely absent in the moderate group. That was quite interesting to us, suggesting that really here we were able to detect three different inflammation patterns that potentially could explain the pathophysiology of these heterogeneous diseases. Now, to further enhance knowledge of cytokine-driven pathogenesis, what we did in addition to OLING is understand, in fact, cytokine signaling among immune cell compartment. And we are starting to do this experiment. And here I'm going to show you an experiment done by Yadi Brachman at the Human Immun monitoring Center that measures in fact, that three phosphorylations, that three phosphorylated upon IL-6 signaling to measure in fact, the level of IL-6 signaling actually on gated circulating CD4 T cells. And what it did, if I have time, I'm going to finish by presenting to you our attempt to map systemic inflammation in patients that develop, in kids, in children that develop this multi-system inflammatory syndrome that is now called MISC. And this study was done by Juzan Gubog-Ginovis and his very talented students, Connor Gruber, in collaboration with Bruce Gelb, who really led the collection of the PDS3 cohort. What Bruce did is that he collected with our help, the help of the COVID-19 BioBank, collected kids that were hospitalized for suspicion of MISC, but also kids that were hospitalized for acute infection. And those were mostly kids that were immunosuppressed, but also healthy control within the same age group. And the first thing that Sasha did is to look at the antibody response in patients with this MISC syndrome. And what he observed is that all the MISC patients developed a high level of antibody. And this antibody were in fact neutralizing antibody. This assay was done by Florian Kramer. And when you look at the isotope response in patients with MISC, you can see that all of these patients developed a strong IgG response, a strong IgG response, again, the spike protein, but they had very little IgM response. In fact, lower level of IgM response than our convalescent patients. Convalescent, this convalescence were in fact adults, suggesting that all of the MISC, hospitalized MISC have had a COVID-2 infection at some point and were all in fact, convalescent patients or have recovered from the infection. So what we also did is we looked, we used again the OLING platform to measure systemic inflammation in this case. And what we saw is that a similar picture than patients with severe disease with very high level of IL-6, very high level of IL-17A, very high level of OSM. Okay, similar to patients with severe disease. So in conclusion, what I showed you is that COVID-19 is a very heterogeneous disease and large-scale cohort can therefore help inform disease pathogenesis. COVID-19 patients expressed very different inflammation pattern with patients with severe disease having either a high or low systemic inflammation. Patients with moderate disease seems to have a strong T-cell priming signature and lack the tissue damage signature. And it seems that these inflammatory patterns are fixed during the disease course, suggesting distinct pathogenesis. So it's important to now continue to map molecularly this inflammation pattern, to continue to unravel disease pathogenesis, stratify patients and guide therapeutic strategy. And it's also going to be important to measure the impact of inflammatory signature on the quality and system ability of the viral specific response and potentially the susceptibility to reinfection. So we did.
Thank you very much, Miriam. We have several questions that have been posted, so I'll start with the first one. Have you been able to define a threshold of IL-6 or TNF levels associated with prognosis of patients? You may be on mute.
Okay, sorry, I was on mute indeed. Just realized that my acknowledgement slide was not there, so I apologize for this. I thought I had sent it, but in that slide I was thanking many, many, many people that have contributed to this effort. So I apologize to my colleagues, but pretty sure I had sent this slide, so I'm not sure what happened. Anyway, so is there any IL-6 cutoff? So we did indeed, and this work was done by Sasha Nyatik at SNAI. So what Sasha did is that he first established the cutoff based on patients, in fact, that developed the cytokine release syndrome and upon treatment with CAR T cells. And then looking at many and hundreds of sample of these patients in healthy control. So we have a cutoff of what IL-6 level, what level are associated with pathogenesis. And these are the data that we have used to look at the patients with different disease. So we have strong cutoff that I'm happy to share. I don't have the numbers in mind, but there is a paper that is indeed in Med Archive, Med Archive, that summarized these results.
A follow-up question is, when do you see the first spike of IL-6 and TNF in serum?
Well, what I was showing is that already on the day of hospitalization, you know, see, I mean, it is possible that we were hospitalizing mostly quite sick patients, right? So it's very difficult to know when exactly during the disease course we see this peak. But with many of our patients, already on the day of hospitalization, the cytokine levels were high. So unfortunately, I think as a community, we lack data on the mild or the asymptomatic patients. It would be really interesting to look at this in more detail. I think some data are appearing right now, but in our case, very early during the hospitalization course, these labels were elevated.
Do you think the different groups are at least partly due to the viral load at the time of infection?
Okay, so yeah, so similar to what John said, unfortunately, our viral load data are, first, we have not correlated yet the viral load and the level of cytokine is something we are trying to do. And unfortunately, we're not able to longitudinally also follow the viral load. And I'm not sure how accurate these data are. So we will be able to correlate soon the viral load on the day of hospitalization with the assay that are on our disposal. We will not be able to correlate longitudinally with the evolution of this viral load. There are several data though, not in from our group, but from a different group, that suggests that there is no correlation, at least on the day of hospitalization, between the viral load and the cytokine level. At some point, because those that do better will be able to, you know, clear the virus. It is possible that patients, it's been shown that patients that are more severe will have higher viral load because they don't clear the virus. But at the day of hospitalization, what distinguishes these severe patients that will have severe or moderate disease are likely not driven or not associated with viral load, from what I'm reading.
Many thanks, Miriam, for this great presentation and discussion. We're going to move to the next presentation. The next presentation is by Jim Heath. He is the president and professor of the Institute of Systems Biology in Seattle. He is a fellow of the American Physical Society, the recipient of the Urban Weinstein Foundation Award from the ACR and the Sackler Prize in Physical Sciences, and was named one of the seven most powerful innovators in the world by Forbes Magazine. His presentation is titled "T cell responses to COVID-19." Jim?
Hi, my name is Jim Heath. It's a pleasure to be here. I want to thank Tony for the opportunity to talk at this AACR meeting on COVID-19. Today, I'm going to talk about T-cell responses to the infection. This is a very large project that I've been, it's a protocol that I'm the scientific lead on, but Jason Goldman at Swedish Medical Center is the clinical lead. I'm going to particularly talk about work from Yao Peng Su and William Chow, but also several others. Mark Davis, Jeff Bluestone, Lou Lanier, Tony Rivas, his postdoc Katie Campbell. Several people have been involved in this work and I just don't have time to give credit to all of them. Here's some disclosures and then the nature of the study. So we've got roughly, it's a two hundred patient study. We began enrolling patients at the end of March when the pandemic was peaking here in Seattle. At the moment, we've got around a hundred patients, all severities. So but the most mildly infected ones are outpatients where we have mobile phlebotomy working, so I won't talk too much about that today. On these patients, we've probably done about one hundred and seventy-two hundred draws so far. And out of these blood draws, we're collecting plasma and PBMCs. We take initial draw at initial diagnosis, one about a week later, and then one during convalescence. And a whole array of analyses are being carried out on these blood draws. We're using basically all the information we possibly can. So I'm going to talk about T-cells and I'll use the 10x dataset as a foundation for this discussion. And then the 10x dataset, we've got not just the whole transcriptome, but also the T-cell and B-cell receptors and a couple hundred surface proteins. We've also got isoplexis, which is about a thirty-five plex of single cell secretome on different phenotypes. And then I'll talk a little bit about T-cell antigen specificities. So if you just do a UMAP of, you know, several patients worth of data, you can look at populations of the different immune cell classes. You generally see, you know, a small number of B-cells. This is a leukemia patient, so you get a lot more. And then monocytes, T-cells, and green, et cetera. So if we look at the just populations of these cells and try to understand how they're behaving with something like WHO severity. So and as a surrogate for severity, we're just looking at patients that are hospitalized but not in the ICU or the ICU. You'll see the well-known and documented lymphopenia that you see in many of these patients that maybe gets a little worse for ICU patients. It's there dominantly in the CD8s, but also in the CD4s. The monocytes, by comparison, are actually elevated relative to healthy patients. There's a number of drugs that are being used in these trials. I think one that's of interest to the cancer community is the immunomodulator IL-6 inhibitor. And for about a half dozen patients, we have IL-6 inhibitor that's given after the first draw and before the second. And for those patients, you see that the CD4 T-cell and CDAT cell populations increase a little bit. The monocytes decrease, not much change in the patients who don't receive this. And so basically, it's as if these populations are being pushed back more towards the healthy patient. Not completely, but just in that direction. If you look at a little more detail, so now this is the UMAP of the, just the CDAT cells here. You can begin pulling out the different phenotypes of the T-cells. So you've got naive T-cells up in this right corner, central affective memory here in the middle, effector and exhaustion T-cells that are here at the left. And then for a few patients, you've got T-cells that are proliferating here on the far left. And if you compare, say, a healthy patient cohort, these seven healthy patients we have here, you'll see a mixture of naive and effector T-cells. For non-ICU patients, you largely see effector T-cells. The ICU patients, by and large, these patients, the T-cells appear to have largely lost the ability to differentiate and they stay in the naive phenotype. For patients that are receiving IL-6 inhibitor, if you don't get the IL-6 inhibitor, basically you'll see an increase, a relative increase of the effector phenotype over time. But for the IL-6 inhibitor-treated patients, you'll see this emergence of this new phenotype, which is really, these are antigen-specific naive T-cells that are of a protective memory phenotype. So the IL-6 inhibitor is more or less saying, at least from the point of view of these T-cells, that the infection is over, but keep on the lookout for more virus when it comes. And you can see a little bit of proliferation of these T-cells. Okay, so what are these T-cells seeing? Well, you can do a simple assay, which is just to use peptide pools from the coronavirus and identify if any of these T-cells are antigen-specific. And as of course you'd expect, you find that the answer is yes. So in healthy controls, you don't see any responses. But in these COVID-19 patients, you'll see maybe, all of them will respond. But sometimes you'll see the activation as measured by interferon gamma secretion increase over time. It may stay constant, it may stay down, but it's always elevated relative to healthy donors. And so taking a deeper look at these antigen specificities, one can take the different SARS-CoV-2 proteins and dismantle them into T-cell antigens, in this case, class one antigens. And so this is the And so this is the spike protein with its receptor binding domain. As you'll recall, this is a trimmer on the actual virion. Here, it's just showed as a monomeric unit. And laid out from the end to C terminus, you can see these various domains. Here's the cleavage domain. After the virus encounters the ACE2 receptor, this component cleaves, and that's the part that becomes exposed right there. So if you calculate out of all, there's something like, you know, as many as 4,000 possible antigens, feed those into a net MHC program. And for class, for HLA 2.1, you'll find only a hundred of these will actually bind with a 500 nanomolar or stronger. And, you know, different algorithms will give you slightly different variations on this, different protein identities. But this overall result is fairly robust. Now, the way that we have gone about taking advantage of this information is to use a technology that goes back a long time. It's called single-chain trimers. Michael Bethune in the Baltimore lab was the first guy to think about making these into libraries. And then my student, William Chow, has done a great job of really optimizing the various mutations of these to make them high-performance reagents. So you have a plasmid, and where you do biscytotic mutagenesis, you just put in all the different antigens. And then each one of these, it becomes a separate mammalian cell expression system, so that each of those expression systems will produce one of these elements. So you've got the antigen, you've got the beta 2M, you've got the MHC. And they are, and they're secreted by the cells, they come out folded. And you can put, you know, various tags on them, turn them into tetamers. We tend to assemble them onto nanoparticles, which allows us to just do a microchip-type analysis of the T-cell populations to avoid aerosolizing these blood samples. To show you the performance of these, here, we've used the gold standard folded peptide MHC for this particular viral antigen. And then the SCT, the single-chain trimmer for this viral antigen, you capture roughly the same numbers of cells. And then if you do TCR sequencing of these, you find that the spectrum of T-cell receptors that you are able to isolate are not only known against this particular antigen, but they're more or less the same T-cell receptors. Okay, so if we take this concept for the spike protein for HLA 2.1, then what I'm showing here is every square is a potential antigen as expressed as a SCT. And the color of the squares is the expression level. And here, this gel shows the expression level for 22 of these antigens. And so you'll see some regions, like this hydrophobic transmembrane domain, don't really get expressed very well. Some regions are fairly well expressed. And so we take, say, the top 30 or so of these and test them. And when we do, this is the readout you get. So here is now the list of putative antigens. We look at two patients, patient number two and patient number five, at the diagnostic and the one-week-later time point. And then we look at a healthy donor. And so the results that we see for this particular library are the same thing we see for all the libraries we've tested so far. If one patient sees this, has antigens of a T-cells, generally the other patient will as well. And so these are truly immunodominant-type antigens. The time dependence of these populations in this patient, they all go up over time. But in patient number five, they're all decreasing over time. That's also something that seems to be fairly consistently observed. And if you'll notice, in this particular A2.1 library, the immunodominant antigen, the most immunodominant antigen, is coming out of this receptor binding domain. So we've reproduced this now for a host of other libraries. And here's three of them. So this is for A2.1, the data I just showed you. Here's B702, and here is A2402. And this begins to reveal how different patients, actually with different HLA haplotypes, see the virus. So the A2.1 patient, the most immunodominant antigen is this RBD-derived antigen. Here, for B702, the immunodominant antigen is coming out of this cleavage domain. Interestingly enough, this dot antigen here is also supported as an MHC for class 2.1, but there's no population detected whatsoever. So it's sort of uniquely seen by B702, even though potentially it could be seen up here. A2402, the dominant antigen that one sees is coming out of this transmembrane domain. And so, you know, I think in a few years, someone's going to start writing about how HLA haplotype and disease severity have some sort of correlation. I think these types of studies can begin to give you some causal relationships between those correlative observations and what the immune system is actually seeing. Another interesting phenomena is that the healthy individuals typically have, even if it's a level of 100 or so below, you can actually see T-cells that are specific for those same antigens with a frequency that is damp way down, but similar to what you see in these COVID-19 patients. And that implies that there may be some genetic encoding of the T-cell repertoire that is unique to each of these HLA haplotypes. So we're in the process now of pulling out the T-cell receptors that correspond to those antigens. And in our 10x dataset, we can actually look at the T-cell receptors also and the clonality of them. So in other words, here's the monoclonal ones that are all basically naive. And then the polyclonal ones tend to be more and more concentrated in these effector and exhausted type regimes. And so what I'm hoping that, you know, we'll have within maybe even a few weeks is to be able to point out that, you know, this one dot here is for an HLA 2.1 patient, and it's against the SARS-CoV-2 protease, or it's against the spike protein, or what have you. And this will give us some deep insights into what is immunoprotective as opposed to what maybe is just leading to T-cell exhaustion in these patients. And just a few other notes about where we're going. If you look at this spike protein, it's actually relatively late in the actual synthesis of the virus as happens in the cell. And it's these earlier proteins down here that are likely to offer larger degrees of immunoprotection. And so we've, in fact, have made some of these libraries as the single-chain trimers. And we've just begun testing the, this one here produces something like 200 putative antigens. We've just begun testing these. And so I think in the near future, we'll have some insights into how the different parts of the protein not just generate different T-cell populations, but how they can play a role in immunoprotection of the patient against the virus. And with that, I will conclude. I thank you for your attention, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Jim, for this fabulous presentation. There's very few questions, and maybe people are trying to digest what you saw to us. I'll start with the first one, that's a clinical question. It's, of the patients with cancer, did you study, were any of them with active therapy?
With active therapy, you mean like...
Cancer, cancer therapy.
Yeah, we have, so it's a... We have a cohort of five patients that were being treated for leukemia at the same time as they had the viral infection. I can, I mean, the outcomes are not particularly good, as one could imagine. We haven't been able to fully analyze that dataset yet, but for sure, you do see those patients.
Another question is, which of these T-cell epitopes are conserved with the seasonal coronavirus?
That's a great question. So we're trying to do a deep search on that. And it appears as if some of the earlier proteins have some overlap with other coronaviruses. And some of the antigens from, say, the protease appear to have some overlap. There is a couple of antigens in these spike proteins that, you know, have some, at least partial overlap with other antigens, not necessarily coronavirus-type antigens, but I think some of the early ones may. And some of the results that we're seeing in those analyses indicate that there may be some pre-existing protection in at least some patients. You know, this, I think, is with these other talks, you know, this was prepared a couple of weeks ago, and pandemic time seems to compress science a lot. And so this wasn't perhaps the most up-to-date presentation. But anyway, I think that there is perhaps some protection in some patients arising from some of these earlier proteins.
There's some other questions, but I really need to ask you a question, which is, in putting it together with the initial scene before, mostly from Miriam Murat and John Wery, where they described, and you have described this different evolution of T-cells which go down, at the lymphocytes and plasma blast, and myeloid cells going up. And then you showed this data with the anti-IL-6 treatment, where the sequence was, well, the ratio was reversed. So do you think that IL-6 may be one of the cytokines that are mediating this lymphopenia and increase in plasma blast?
Yes, so I guess if I had made this presentation this morning, I would have said... So what we find is, we've done a lot of analysis to identify where these proteins come from. The IL-6, as you can imagine, is mostly coming from monocytes, in terms of, at least the PBMCs. And now, this is known. But as the IL-6 level increases, the monocytes lose their class 2 HLA, basically the class 2 antigen presenting machinery. And that must almost certainly be associated with how the T-cells are evolving as well. Because you see the, at that same point, you see a very cytotoxic class of CD4 T-cells, where all the polyclonal, all the clonal expansion is happening in this unusual phenotype. When you give tosulizumab, you actually raise the IL-6 level, but all the other cytokines in the blood go down. And you see recovery of HLA. And you see that the, even the CD4s evolve into a more natural differentiation pattern. So, yes, and there's a, you know, I think all of us that are talking here today, as well as the other groups working on this, you know, we're beginning to sort of paint these pictures. Even in spite of not having double-blind files, these really, really deep dives allow you to begin resolving some of these specific therapy effects here.
Well, Jim, there's several other questions. I hope we'll transfer them to you. Thank you very much for this great presentation. And actually, I wanted to comment you, I really like your anti-COVID ninja logo that you had on your slides protecting your group.
Thank you. We'll send you a t-shirt.
Good, I'll wear it. So we'll go on to the last presentation of this session, the presentation by Dr. Laurence Zivogel. She is the head of the Laboratory of Tumiminology and Cancer Immunotherapy at Gustave Russey Institute and University Paris South, among others. She's the recipient of the first Hesma Award for Immunoncology. Dr. Zivogel's presentation is titled "Elevated Calprotectin and Abnormal Myeloid Cell Subsets Characterize Severe COVID-19."
Good morning. Thank you very much to the AACR committee for giving us the opportunity to present our Gustave Russey Cancer Center experience in COVID-19. The title of my talk will be "Calprotectin and Innate Immune Defenses Against COVID-19 in Cancer Patients." I will take your questions afterwards. Thank you very much. So I am Laurence Zivogel, Gustave Russey Cancer Center. I have no conflicts of interest pertaining to COVID-19. After several epidemics caused by coronaviruses, a novel virus, SARS-CoV-2, emerged in Wuhan, China, at the end of 2019, rapidly causing the pandemic COVID-19. At the end of May this year, COVID-19 has been officially diagnosed in close to 6 million people worldwide, causing more than 350,000 deaths. In France, 30,000 deaths were recorded. Paris was hit by this pandemic with about 13,000 cases, and I believe this was underestimated. While the vast majority of SARS-CoV-2 positive individuals are asymptomatic silence carriers, severe COVID, which mostly develops in individuals harboring comorbidities, leads to acute respiratory failure, often associated with a cytokine storm culminating in multi-organ dysfunction and death, recalling bacterial sepsis. Conversely, in mild cases, viral infection can elicit a T and B cell response in mediastinal lymph nodes and dysfunctional TH1 and the cytotoxic T-cell response. Satellite of follicular T helper cell immune responses will keep in check lung viral infection and prevent the spreading of this virus. The virus directly infects endothelial cells in lung capillaries through its angiotensin-converting enzyme receptor 2. Immunotrombosis is one of the main features of severe COVID-19, stemming from a very complex interaction between dying endothelial cells, activating the recruitment of platelets, monocytes, and neutrophils that may form nets. This positive feedback loop will lead to the systemic release of IL-6 and chemokines, the elevation of fibrinogen and edimers, and severe hypoxia. Theoretically, cancer patients are at a high risk of severe COVID-19 due to their age, the high prevalence of cancer risk factors, in particular obesity and smoking, the presence of cancer-associated metabolic syndrome, diabetes, and hypertension, as well as the side effects of therapies that include immunosuppression, arterial hypertension, cardiomyopathy, as well as accelerating senescence. At this stage, it's not clear whether cancer as such is an independent risk factor for severe COVID-19 or whether cancer-associated comorbidities with actually account for COVID outcome in cancer patients. At Gustave Russey, we launched the COVID, the On-COVID Endeavor, a protocol aimed at analyzing the incidence, the prevalence, and severity of COVID-19 in 500 French cancer-bearing individuals. We have been prospectively collecting more than 4,000 specimens in our biobanking to be able to study the dynamics of innate and cognate immune responses and local changes of the microbiome. From March 19 to April 28, about 12% of cancer patients and 18% of healthcare workers were diagnosed with COVID-19 as assessed by RT-PCR. 178 patients with cancer have been managed for COVID-19 at Gustave Russey. One quarter above 70 years old, one-third had hypertension, and 40% had an ECOG performance status superior to 1. Overall, 70% patients were hospitalized, 26 developed clinical worsening, and 17% died. In univariate analysis, increased risk of death was associated with aging, smoking, ECOG superior to 2, metastatic disease, and the use of cytotoxic chemotherapy the past three months. However, in multivariate analysis, only the ECOG status, performance superior to 2 at the last visit was the strongest determinant associated with both clinical worsening and death. D-dimers were also associated with an increased risk of death. Gustave Russey and hôpital de Paris Assistance Publice Cauchin in Paris joined forces to analyze whether immune parameters could predict the switch from mild to severe COVID-19 in non-cancer patients to start with. High-dimensional spectral flow cytometry combined with mass flow cytometry and single-cell RNA-seq were performed on 130 patients. and single-cell RNA-seq were performed on 130 patients. Here, I am showing to you the first results concerning the high-dimensional spectral flow cytometry analysis of blood cells in COVID-positive and COVID-negative patients, using patients suffering from flu-like symptoms and hospitalized during the same period of time as negative controls. So this high-dimensional spectral flow cytometry segregated mild from severe and controlled patients. When we applied the UMAP dimensionality reduction to the prototypic cell surface markers defining monocytes and neutrophils, expression dataset segregated controls from COVID-mild and COVID-severe groups. COVID induced a dramatic loss of non-conventional CD16 high, here in this green gate, CD14 low monocyte, followed by the reduction of HLA-DR expression and the upregulation of CD11B on these monocytes, as well as, in the neutrophils, the progressive loss of CD101 and CD10 in severe cases. These conclusions were extended to more than 130 patients. To gain insight into the phenotype of innate immune cells, we carried out single-cell RNA-seq using the 10x Genomic Chromosome platform on fresh cells without prior freezing to preserve neutrophils. On three COVID-negative and three COVID-positive, one mild and two severe patients at two different time points, day 0 and day 10. The UMAP profiling of this monocyte identified three clusters defined by CD16, CD11B, and HLA-DR genes. The differential expression genes and pathway analysis delineated a distinct type 1 interferon signature in the mild COVID patient monocytes with expression of interferon-stimulated genes such as IFI44L, or MX1, or SIGLEQ1, which is CD169, as prototypical markers of this ISG signature. And the mass cytometry also confirmed the increased proportion of CD169-positive monocyte in mild patients, as you can observe here. In contrast, the viral signature was less pronounced or even absent in severe COVID-19 samples, contrasting with an elevation of expression of reactive oxygen and nitrogen species and NFKAB activation pathway suggestive of an immunosuppressive phenotype. The mass cytometry confirmed the increased expression of phosphor-related transcription factor relA in HLA-DR-low monocyte and circulating CD34 cells in severe COVID-19. The gene ontology network analysis reconfirmed the high expression of type 1 interferon signaling pathway and viral-related networks in the monocytes, as well as in the neutrophils of mild patients, while the regulation of ROS and NOS was prominent, as well as the NFKAB signaling pathway in the two severe patients. The single-cell RNA-seq data in neutrophils also contrasted mild versus severe patients. The UMAP of neutrophil population identified four clusters centered around S108, S109 alarmins, cluster number 4, CXCR4, the receptor for SDF1, or CXCL12 in cluster 3 and 4, and IL-1 receptor alpha in cluster 1. Severe diseases were associated with these high proportions of neutrophil expressing these alarmins, as well as EPSI, Epsilon R1, and the tetraspanine, and CXCR4 genes. This gene signature identified a population of ROS and NOS-producing pre-neutrophils that were prototypical in the fact that they overexpressed CXCR4. In contrast, analysis of the neutrophils of the mild patients suggested the type 1 interferon signature with the prominent IFI44L and MX1 as a prototypic genes centering the meta-genes of the ISG. These mild versus severe hallmarks observed in mass cytometry and spectral flow cytometry and RNA-seq were actually corroborated and reflected by serum analytes. Here, I'm showing to you that calprotectin, so this is an heterodimeric protein assembling S108 and N9, it was the most significantly increased circulating biomarker in severe patients associated with the rise of 23 other analytes out of the 40 that have been tested in ELISA. You can see the CXCL8 and CXCL12, as well as IL-6 in this 84 serum. So in sharp contrast, in those patients that are doing well and have a mild case, we have the type 1 interferon that can be seen as the main serum blueprint in these mild cases. Our TPCR was capable of corroborating the upregulation of this heterodimer forming this calprotectin in the whole blood of additional investigated patients in a validation cohort. Age and comorbidities play an important role in the risk of a patient developing severe COVID. In fact, plasma calprotectin was increased across different groups, even in the controls, meaning that calprotectin, and that's what we surmise, should be considered mostly as a marker of comorbidity, but also as a marker of the viral infection. Of note, the bacterial infections didn't interfere so much in the calprotectin serum levels. So this confounding factor, bacterial infection, should be overlooked. Most of the clinical significant variables that are associated with immunotrombosis, such as the elevation of deadimers, the elevation of fibrinogen, the increasing circulating neutrophil counts, markedly correlated with calprotectin levels, while correlation with IL-6 were much less pronounced. So as a first conclusion, we can say that immature and pre-neutrophils harboring an immunosuppressive fingerprint and correlated with high levels of serum alarmins seems to be associated with a switch from mild to severe diseases. And this is accompanied by an early loss of non-classical monocytes and a downregulation of HLA-DR and CD169 SIGLEQ1, the prototypic type 1 interferon signature in classical monocytes. This conjecture was not observed in mild disease where type 1 interferon prevailed and where circulating neutrophils and monocytes express CD169. And the best predictor announcing severe COVID was validated, and I have no time to show you that. But prospectively, the best parameters announcing a switch to severe was the increased levels of calprotectin and the loss of non-classical monocytes in the blood. So we attempted to validate this conclusion now in cancer patients. We analyzed COVID-19-positive at the spike and at the recovery phases versus COVID-negative cancer patients that were undergoing or not chemotherapy. We could corroborate the loss of CD101 in neutrophils in COVID-19 cancer-bearers. Surprisingly, cancer patients presented with very high proportions of non-classical monocytes harboring an activated NFKAB signaling pathway prior to any kind of viral infection. Of note, HLA-DR and CD11B were not affected by the infection on classical monocytes in cancer patients, in contrast to non-cancer patients. Most importantly, a great proportion of cancer patients harbored the prototypical type 1 interferon signature with high levels of circulating monocytes expressing 169 and detectable type 1 interferon in the blood using performant ELISA. So interestingly, I am showing to you here a case report from one individual that was diagnosed with COVID right after his chemotherapy. And you see that the chemotherapy is actually eliminating the neutrophils. And this eliminates also the calprotectin from the blood of this patient, because the source of calprotectin is the neutrophils. And we see that then the interferon type 1 can be seen again. So importantly and surprisingly, the heterodimeric calprotectin is sky-high in all cancer patients right at diagnosis, regardless of any kind of cancer status, regardless of chemotherapy, and did not correlate that much with deadimers, surprisingly, except in those that are not COVID-positive, actually. So this is compatible with the notion that cancer status should be regarded as a comorbidity status, should not be used to predict the severity of the disease. So that summarizes here, and since I am short in time, I will just finish by saying that two reports suggest that cancer per se may not be an independent risk factor for COVID-19, rather, cancer-associated comorbidities dictate the prognosis. And I think our data seems to support this conclusion. I would like to thank the first author, Emery Sylvain, and Florent Genu for all this beautiful work on high-dimensional flow cytometry, the spectral flow cytometry, and the mass cytometry, and the RNA-seq data, and Eric Solari and Michael Fortney for their great work in assembling all the specimens, as well as in concluding for the importance of calprotectin in the pathogenicity of this lung infection. And I would like to thank the post-docs, Angel Goubet, and Agathe Buisson, and Lisa De Rosa for setting up OnCOVID trial, and all the clinicians from Gustave Russey. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Laurence, for this great presentation. We'll have some discussion now. I'll start the first question by a question that Miriam Murat sent through the chat in the virtual green room. Miriam wanted to ask you if checkpoint blockade alters the disease course in patients with cancer with COVID infections? Run, I don't know, we, we lost you, I think. I saw you connected, I'm sorry. For the rest of the audience, Laurence Zivogel was here in the virtual green room, but I don't see her anymore.
Tony, just called me. I think she's reconnecting. She had a problem, she disconnected, she's reconnecting right now.
Thank you, Miriam.
I'm sorry.
If the people listening, you want to hold for a moment, we'll try to get Laurence Zivogel back. So we'll wait, I'll just talk through this, that there's another question I'm going to try to rescue that we'll ask her whenever she joins, rejoins the green room. But I, I'm sorry, I think we'll have to transfer the questions to her. Miriam, you'll have to give her a call or stop by to see her next time you're in Paris, whenever that's possible. I think we're going to close the session, so we don't go over time. I tell you, I'm just blown away by this session. I said you were rock stars of research, and it shows why you're my idols. This has been outstanding presentations of cutting-edge science addressing the COVID-19 pandemic. And I hope you all enjoy the rest of the AACR virtual meeting too. Thank you very much to all.